Welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council at 24, 2024. Little after six o'clock, we're here in city council chambers, 345 High Street, of course, in Hamilton. Roll call, please.
Mohler.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Ryan.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll start off with offering a prayer, the council member, Michael Ryan, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you are.
Lord, let us live each day in the most loving ways, the God-conscious ways. Let us serve all who are in need, regardless of race, color, or creed. Continue to guide our city, our city council, and our management teams. Please continue to protect our police officers and firefighters and keep them out of harm's way. Please continue to bless our city, our state, and our wonderful country, the United States of America. Amen.
I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America, a truly repugnant for which it stands, one nation under God, and the use of liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have some really special presentations this evening. First one is a key to the city presentation to our city manager, former city manager, Joshua Smith. Flout up. Well, I've been down a while. I ain't already said this. Well, you knew this was coming, didn't you? Key to the city. You knew it. Man, he told us that wherever city he's ever worked in, he's gotten a key to the city. And you thought you were working to get one from the city of Hamilton?
That was in 2012 when I said that.
Lot of things were said in 2012. Okay. Looks nice, doesn't it? We probably had the most words on ours, though, which I think is a testament to you and testament to us, okay? Key to the city, presented by Hamilton City Council to Joshua Smith. Thank you for your vision, leadership, integrity, and economic development skills in revitalizing and improving our city on April 24, 2024. And I do mean our city because you are a Hamiltonian. Now, I forgot to invite your family up here. Come on up here. Please, please. Maybe let's give him the microphone. I'm sure he's got lots of things to say about Joshua Smith. It's an honor to give this to you. All of us are going to probably say a few words, but you and your city team really took us to the next level. And I think you know what level we were at back when you first started here, and you know what level that you happen to be leaving the city. And I know you're still going to improve our city as you work in your, in your new position. So I'm going to give this to you, and you're going to speak last. I think you need to hear from other people first. And I look forward to all the sandwiches that are going to be named after you at all of these new restaurants. He's got a salad called the Joshua. Is that right?
That's true.
More restaurants, more salads, more sandwiches, but he deserves more than that. Okay, Vice Mayor.
Uh, well, there could be a bologna sandwich, maybe. Sorry. I had to do it. I'm sorry. No, congratulations, and I hope everything's going good in your new job. We do appreciate everything. I know I do. And I wish you the best a lot, you know, with your, with our future and a little bit of Butler County. But I do wish you luck on your whole, the whole area that you cover because I know you're going to do very well. Thank you.
Joshua, I think back to, to when you came to Hamilton, and we recruited you. We visited so many other cities. We had so many, so many wonderful opportunities to, to talk to potential city managers. And you were our union's choice. And your promise to us has, has been brought to fruition, that the change would be imminent, and it has been. It has been a wonderful journey with you. The team that, that you surrounded yourself with and, and recruited and have joined you still remain with us. We're glad they are. We're glad that the experience levels that they brought with them have proven to fruition just like, like your experience. We wish you nothing but the best, you and your family, nothing but the best. We're, we're real excited that you're here with us, and we realize that those opportunities presented themselves over the years, that you had other choices, and you purposely stayed with us. And we're really, really proud to call you a Hamiltonian with our key to the city. Thanks, Joshua.
Joshua, congratulations on a well-deserved honor. I can't thank you for everything that you've done for our town. You made a lot of sacrifices. I know the family's made a lot of sacrifices. So thank you for supporting him, and thank you for supporting Hamilton through, through thick and thin. So I wish you the best. I'm looking forward to working with you. I know we got some Amtrak stuff in the, in the works and in the mix. So congratulations again, and thank you for your service to Hamilton.
Well, I see you more now on the sixth floor than I saw you 12 and a half years here. So, but like I told you today, it does my heart good to see you so happy because the last couple of years you did not look very happy with here, just with all the work and everything going on. And just one other thing I'd like to say, since Rob Wild is in the crowd tonight, we can thank Rob for you being here because even though we had our 10 picks, he kept pushing this. We goes, I don't know, I really think there's something about this, this guy. We need to get him. And so he, he was your biggest promoter.
It's amazing what $10,000.
Joshua, thank you very much for everything that you did for this city. I have appreciated our relationship. I especially appreciate your guidance to someone who came into this as not knowing what he was getting into, but mostly I appreciate your friendship. I wish you the best of luck and look forward to working more with you. And I wish you guys the best. I think that you and Fran have got to spend more time together, and I think that's very valuable. And I wish you guys the best. Braden, good luck to you and your choice of college.
Thank you. Good luck, Joshua. Five years ago, when I started running for council, I thought a long time about it, but Hamilton was in such a good place, and the momentum was such that I thought, why wouldn't I want to be a part of this? And I'm happy I did. I remember talking to you about the city, and it didn't take long to figure out why there was such momentum, and it was because of you. I will also never forget the day in the fall when Joshua asked me to have lunch, and we sat down across the table, and he said, I want to tell you something. And when he did, he had a plan, and my heart sunk. I was running for council again. But you have left the city in a wonderful position. And I know what you do for the city is really just starting. It's going to be a different way of doing now. And I'm excited. I did a little soul searching that night about, whoa, what would we do without him? But we now know, we have a wonderful new city manager. You are still here, so we've got a win-win situation. So thank you.
All great, all right.
I don't have anything prepared, but five keys to the city is a lot of keys. Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, I was concerned Carla was going to say what she said to me the other day, which was Larry drove by her house, and Fran was outside mowing on a Saturday because I was working. But I was like, please don't tell Fran that because I had to hear about it when I got home later that night. And Joel, I do appreciate her friendship, the fact that you lost 31 cheeseburgers to me on the golf course last year. But I really want to thank the Hamilton High basketball team for coming out tonight. I know the only reason you're here is to support me, so thank you. That means a lot. But, no, I know how long these meetings last, so I'm going to keep this to about 10 seconds. Just, it was the honor of a lifetime to serve in this role. 13 years, seven months as city manager at Hamilton, 23 years as a city manager. It was a long time to be a city manager. Scott Timmer in my office today, he's like, how the heck did you last 23 years as a city manager? He's, obviously, he's having a lot of fun. Fairfield, a lot of good stuff, but he's like, that's a long time. But I told him, when you have great city councils and a great mayor, I said, the time flies. So thank all of you very much. But love this city. It's my hometown now, and I look forward to watching Craig and all the great work he's going to do. He's got a great team out in the crowd tonight, and he's got the best city council in the world. So thank you.
Thank you. You probably can't hear this, but you said it got to the pit of your stomach or something. I said, holy schnikes. That may not have been the right word. All right, this is the funnest, one of the funnest things we do all year, and it is the third grade seatbelt award winners. Officer Christie Collins, come on up here and be joined by, if possible, city manager Craig Buchheit and public safety director Scott Scormesi, too. They'll come on up here for this. Feel free to clap anytime and whatever means.
The family can come on. So I'll explain the program. Every, every year, I go to all of the schools. There's 13 schools altogether. And I talk to, I do an assembly for all the third graders. And I, I talk to the third graders about seatbelt safety, why it's important to wear a seatbelt. I show a video, and then I do a little demonstration about the importance of seatbelts. And then I tell the students, they're encouraged to do a poster with a seatbelt slogan on it, and then artwork. And you can see Corson's here, and Adler, if you want to hold yours up. So there are over 800 third graders that I talked to in these 13 schools, 800 students. And out of all the 800 students, I pick one winner from each school. So there's 13 winners altogether. Those 13 winners, we have a big pizza party at the Colligan Lodge, and these are the top two winners out of the 13 winners. And we have a big pizza party, and then First Financial Bank is our sponsor. So First Financial Bank gives us money to hold the party. So they give us money. We have a big pizza party, and then out of all the money that I save from the pizza, all the extra money, we give to the students. So they get so much money for their great poster and slogans. So you want to read your poster?
Don't cheat a buck or a shita. Keep your seatbelt tight so you don't take flight.
And mayor?
I just want to say, every year, when you see these young people with all of their posters around Colligan Lodge, it is really fun to read them and then talk to the families. Sometimes you've got parents and grandparents and siblings. It is just a super, super event. Again, thanks for Raymond's Pizza for being involved this year. Is that correct? And of course, First Financial Bank, who provides the financial awards. But thank you, parents, for, for having your youngsters be involved with this and encouraging them because that is really, really cool. And I'll give it to now to our city manager.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, it's amazing program. And to think of all the hundreds, thousands of kids that Officer Collins has touched their lives and interacted with them and put on this great program for so many years. So credit to her and appreciate you for her. Thank you, Christie.
Thanks. Congratulations to you, too. This is an awesome program. But as the city manager said, I almost called him chief, as the city manager said, this program, I can remember when, what's it been now, 10 years? Close 13 years. So we, we lost an icon back then with Bobby Joe Gentry that did this for probably 50 years. And I can remember early on when Chrissy started this, and I know I can speak for Craig, we're so proud of you because of how many lives you've had touched and taking over from an icon. And now everybody remembers you. So, I mean, thank you for everything that you do.
Any of the parents want to say anything, or the young people want to say anything about their, about their success?
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for honoring these kids tonight. I, I worked for city government for many years, and I think it's important for kids to know what's going on. So I was really proud when Adler had the chance to do this and get recognized. And Carson, good job as well. So thank you, Officer Collins, and thank you to the city team for doing this for the kids. Appreciate it.
Anyone else want to say anything up here?
Mr. Mayor, Christie, what schools were they from? I don't remember if you said.
St. Anne's and St. Joe's.
Perfect. Thank you.
We're going to take a picture afterwards, and we're going to post it on our Facebook page. And in the past, I used to keep the posters from all 13 schools, and we would take them to the fair. We would hang them up and at the fair for people to see. We would post them around the police department. The last two years, I did not do this because of the new police department. And the move, the move, and I didn't want them to get damaged. Next year, this fall, we'll be moving in the new police department. So next spring, when I do the program, I am going to keep the posters again. And I plan on framing them. The 13 posters I will frame, and hopefully I'll be able to display them in the lobby of the police department for a short time, or around the police department until, that 'll be 2025, until 2026, when I teach the program again, so I can show the next year's students the type of posters that I expect my future students to do. So that way, everybody that walks into the lobby of the police department or around the police department, they see the message that these students are trying to get out about seatbelt safety, along with the posters and the message being on social media to get that message out about seatbelt safety. So good job. I'm proud of you guys.
All right, now, now, ready to walk. Ready to release? Question for Rob Wild. Did you win when you were in third grade?
Which year in third grade?
You took it twice. No, I'm just kidding. Won all kinds of awards. Okay, Hamilton High School Winter Sports Recognition. Ready?
Yes. First of all, I'd like to welcome the basketball team from Hamilton High and our swim team. They both have many accomplishments to be very proud of this year. I'm going to let, if I seen Missy back there, if Missy is there, I would like for her to come on up and bring her coaches up and introduce her coaches, and then we'll bring, let the coaches introduce the players. But one thing I want to say is that Hamilton is moving forward. And I think it's nice at times to recognize you guys and let you know that you are a part of this. You are something that we are able to celebrate and celebrate publicly. I see Hamilton moving forward as I see our sports program. If you want to go to the podium, Missy. But it is so exciting to see what has been done this year with Hamilton High Sports and the progress that has been made over the years. So, Missy, if you would like to say a little something and introduce the coaches, I would appreciate it.
So I'll be really short. I'm just blessed. And, and I say this, I believed in this city forever. And when I took over this job, my goal was to get us back to where we are. And we have a long way to go, but we made strides this year. And those strides came because our athletes are really starting to buy in, and we have amazing coaches. Our basketball team, our football team, our swim team, our academic quiz team, we are really starting to make strides. And for that, I am just grateful to be a part of it. I feel like I'm on a great ride. And every day I come in, I think one coach says 1% better every day. I don't like 1%, I like 10 to 20. And I feel like we're doing that. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to first Kevin Higgins, our basketball
Well, thanks for the honor. Like, Mr. Lauer called me up about this. This is, this is great. Brought with us today, part of our 2024 district champs, Sweet 16 team, which hadn't been done in, I believe, 20 years. Someone said, it's Ray Tillery. These are my four seniors this year. So, and they are seeing, these four were really, really key for leadership and just being great guys for the team and kind of carrying them along. You can't win in high school without great seniors, in my mind. And these guys did it.
Coach, can you bring them up here while you talk?
Yeah, go on up. You got.
I know they want to come up to here.
Come on up here, guys. Stand up front there.
Hey, come on up here if I want to.
Right in front.
Yep, right in front.
Be like a one on.
Be proud, guys.
Be the Washington Generals against these guys.
Yeah. So the four seniors that got up here, closest to me is Andre Holden. We got right there is Ray Tillery, Demetrius Berry, and Mason King. You said they're a huge part of what we did this year. It was, it was great. Like, Missy said, it's, it's, it's great to be part of Hamilton and try to build back up the pride in, in our sports, our school in particular. I teach also at the building as well. You know, there's a lot of good positive things going to Hamilton. These kids represent that. They sacrifice. They overcome a ton. And I think what's just more special, I kind of leave with these guys, and they know how I feel about them. What they're able to do where no one thought they could do it, shows you anything can be done. Because at the beginning of the year, they know no one would have picked this group to be the one to get this far in the entire city. No one gave them any credit. And they, every day, they just worked and worked and worked, and they embodied the idea of team. And it just shows, we, we talk about all the time, like, don't ever let anyone doubt you. If you do it together, you can accomplish great things. And they, they did that. I think it's really a great moment for these guys, for you guys to recognize them. Oftentimes, they don't get recognized for some of the things they overcome. And really proud of them, really proud of everything that's going on at the high school. And, you know, we work with great people at the high school. So anytime you see any of us out there, I like to take a lot of pride. And these kids do a great job of really trying to achieve and do great things. So thanks for everything.
I do, I do want to tell you what a masterful job you did coaching this year, getting these young men to play for you. I watched the first game, and it was, it was a little rough. And then I was there for about the third or fifth game, and you could slowly see it coming together. But when Bob Harris and I went down to the game against Sycamore, guys working together, you guys did such a great job of gelling throughout the year. I am so proud to have watched you. And Drake, having you in class earlier as a freshman, man, you have come a long way. For you to actually stand up here, you speak well. You were very quiet as a freshman and didn't say much of anything. But man, to watch you guys mature and come together and gel, man, you have made Hamilton very proud, and thank you very much.
I want to add that I saw you guys play the playoff game, the playoff games at Fairfield, and I saw a lot of Hamilton pride in those stands. I saw a lot of Hamilton pride. So thank you, guys, for generating that Hamilton pride.
Next up, I'll just introduce our swim coach, Elizabeth Wagner.
If you want to bring them, if you want to bring your. Sure. All right, guys and girls, come on down. So I was able to rally quite a few. The one great thing about being the swim coach is you get to coach both the boys' and the girls' team. And what's unique about swimming is that both the boys and the girls swim and practice together, which is kind of unique for other sports at the school. So, you know, they, they all have to really prove themselves in the pool. But my name's Elizabeth Wagner, and I want to thank Mr. Joel Lauer for introducing or inviting us to speak tonight and giving us the opportunity to speak about these student athletes. The swim team is not usually the most popular sport at Hamilton High School, and it's one that a lot of students tell me, I didn't even know we had a swim team. So that's a narrative that I take personally and always try to change. I also teach at the high school in the same department as Kevin Higgins, so we have a good time trying to rally people together for our sports. But this season, we posted some impressive numbers with 23 members on our team. And we also are in our second year of our middle school program, which finished in second place in the middle school championships this season. Some of our highlights include at our GMC conference meet, which we swim against, you know, the 10 other, the nine other teams in the GMC conference, including, you know, some of the big top dogs like Mason and Sycamore. And, you know, these are some of the best kids in the state. And for us to finish in seventh place on both the boys' and the girls' side is the highest finish that we have had in the past 25 years as a team. So some of our notable. On the boys' side here, some of our notable scorers include Elijah Lay, Jude Yordi, Connor Hendricks, Jack Yangling. On the girls' side, including Nicolette Cord, just do a little wave to say who you are, Sydney Hibbard, Hannah Robinson, Hazel Culver, and Sky Stevenson. We also had some really impressive swims at our sectional and district meet. At our sectional meet, the girls' 400 freestyle relay team of Hazel Culver, Hannah Robinson, Michaela Platt, and Carson Ramey qualified for districts in the 400 freestyle relay for the third year in a row. But one of the biggest highlights of the season was our district meet where junior Hazel Culver, good little wave, had an outstanding performance. She qualified for the district meet in three different events, the 200 individual medley, the 100 breaststroke, and the girls' freestyle relay. To qualify means that you are in the top 32 best swimmers in this region. In the 200 IM, she broke her school record for the third time. But the best event of the night was certainly the 100 breaststroke. She placed ninth in the district. She also broke her own school record for the seventh time. And it was a late night, but the best part was that we got to tell her that she qualified for states. And not only did she qualify for the state meet, but she also became the only female swimmer to ever qualify from Hamilton High School. So we made our way to Canton for the state meet, and Hazel swam the 100 breaststroke against 32 other incredible swimmers in the state. And she moved up seven places to finish 24th in the state in that event. So we're so proud of her accomplishments and all of their accomplishments this season. And even better, most of them all here, except for Connor, have some more years to go. So we are, oh, Nicolette and Sydney, sorry. They have some, we have some more years to go with them. But we do want to thank you all so much for the support of the program. It really is my privilege and honor to coach these kids and to grow Hamilton Swimming. When I started, I always say there was like maybe three people who would show up randomly, and now we have 23. So we look forward to continuing engaging with you and the community and our school district, and just to continue seeing our program rise. So follow us on Instagram, Hamilton underscore swim. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Guys, what a great representation for Hamilton City Schools and the city of Hamilton. I think it's interesting when Hamilton starts competing in some of the sports that they have not been competing in for decades, such as swimming, tennis. And I believe our volleyball team's grown a little bit, and the programs that you guys have built are so important to our success in the city. They are, they are really highlights that possibly bring people in to move into Hamilton and build their families here. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a round of applause for Hamilton. Okay, next we have Maple Avenue Freight Station. Update by Meyer Brothers and Sons.
My name is Jeremy Culver with Meyer Brothers and Sons. My business partner, Rick, sitting in the back. We just wanted to come. I reached out to Liz Hayden, wanted to give you guys an update. an update on where we're at with the freight station, since you guys trusted us with that project. Rick took the lead from an architectural standpoint, and then I had the privilege of taking lead from the construction management side. So one of our guys, Luke Meyer, very talented with videography, he put together a video. He's, he's actually making a documentary on the project. And so he put together a little trailer. It's about eight minutes long. I sent it over, and I think we're gonna play it maybe. Yeah. Yeah, we've also got some before and afters that we wanted to share with you guys. It was a little hard to believe it was almost two years ago. It was a little over two years ago that we actually started considering this as a project and started pursuing the property and reached out to Tom Vanderhorst. He was in our corner from day one. We've been so grateful for him. That picture, if you go back one, that's actually the top is the, the first day that Rick and Joey and myself met with Tom and Ken Rivera and Neil Cohen onsite to actually view it. And then the picture beneath it is what it looks like today. So the before and afters have been really fun to put side by side. But it was a little over two years ago that we actually were pursuing this job or this project. And then it was March 31st of last year that we actually got the keys to the property. And our goal was to be moved in within right around 12 months. And we actually got occupancy today. We had our inspection with Ken Rivera. And so just over 12 months from when we got the keys, we were able to move into the office and the showroom. And then next month, in about three weeks, we'll have occupancy for the paint shop and the wood shop. And so we've made just incredible strides. One of the primary goals of the project was to really redeem and preserve this, you know, amazing building that we've got in the city. And through Rick's efforts and just a lot of ideas as we collaborated, we've been able to do that really well, we feel like. We wanted to maintain some of the detailing on the interior by use, we, we kept one of the old doors that's over 100 years old, and it still functions. And so in the entryway, we have that lifted up, and it still functions. We reused a lot of the doors on the exterior for desks and things in the office, valances for the, the windows. But it's just been a really, it's been a really fun and exciting project for us as a business, but also knowing that we're preserving this, this old historical building that was built partially in the 1800s. And then the, the part that we're in was in the early 1900s. And so one of the, I think this, that last picture right there, we've got a side by side of that picture and one with the, the old fence. And I think that was, that was kind of a profound picture as we put that before and after side by side, because one of the other goals was to really create some more transparency in the neighborhood. That, that picture right there. And so that old green fence was finally able to come down and, and, and just create some more transparency to the city. We've been able to meet some of the neighbors, which has been really exciting. And Jim Worga, one of the, one of the stories that was really kind of neat was he's, he's our neighbor to the west. And there was a fence that divided his property from ours. And so we, we were taking that fence down, and we were planning to put a fence back up because we figured they would want us to. And we met Jim one day, and we were standing in the lot. He was just asking what we were doing with the, with the property. So we were, you know, sharing with him. And we told him, we were like, yeah, we've taken this fence down, Jim, temporarily, but we need to put one, we figure we'll put one back up. And he says, why would you do that? And we said, well, we figured you'd want us to. And he said, neighbors need to be neighbors. Don't put a fence back up. And, and that conversation has really, I think, framed what our goal is, big picture with this project, is to really hopefully inspire and continue the momentum that's been happening in this neighborhood and just move it further into the Jefferson neighborhood. And so we've, we've had a lot of fun working on this project. We're incredibly grateful to you as city council, just to trust us with this project and trust us with this property. We know you took a lot, you put a lot of faith in us. And we recognize that, but we feel like we've, we've put forth 110% effort. And we've tried to do everything that we stated we wanted to do within our proposal. And we're really excited about the fact that we're going to be moving our entire business there by mid-May. And so just want to say thank you to you guys. Who also want to, I also want to thank the inspection team, Ken Rivera, and Daryl Rupert, and Andrew Jones, and Donnie Smith have been incredible to work with. Ken, I, I got to meet with him onsite today. And he was just sharing, you know, what a privilege it, it has been for him to get to interact with us. I mean, he's been interacting with Meyer Brothers and Sons since the day he got here. But they've just been so helpful. And part of our conversation today was about the way so many builders and inspection teams have an adversarial relationship, which is just, it's so counterintuitive. But that has not been our experience in all the projects that we've done in Hamilton. So we've been super grateful to be able to have them in our corner. And anytime we have questions, we know we can reach out. And then obviously, Tom Vanderhorst told me he'd be listening. So I definitely want to give a shout out to him because without him, we definitely probably would not be moving into this, into this great facility. So just want to say thank you to you guys.
We should say thank you to you for, for jumping into this project, proving an area. So thank you very much. And I think you learned that our city team likes to get to yes, not just no.
There's the audio.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
You have more than earned that trust that we have in you. So it is a beautiful felt building, whole land. I've always loved that. Just going to bring that neighborhood up too. So thank you. And Rick, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
When you first came with your concept, and we talked about the book and the aspect of Maple Avenue, and what you will bring to the, and we all saw the vision, understood where you wanted to go. And here we are a year later celebrating. Two years ago, I remember when you and the team from your company came to visit with us, and how instrumental you shared all of the yes people that Pat just mentioned, Tom and in his vision, the team that worked with Tom and all of the inspection teams and stuff. We're so proud that you're here and glad that you've made Maple Avenue now your home. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, would you mind just explaining maybe for the audience that doesn't know what you do, what will be there, and why people will be coming there? I know you've been around a long time, but not everyone may know.
You bet, you bet. So Meyer Brothers and Sons has been around since 1978. Rick's father and uncle started the business. And so Rick and I and, and his cousin Joey have had the privilege of, of taking it over. But we're a design, build, remodeling company. So we do architecture and interior design for remodeling projects, new construction, additions. But then we also have a custom cabinet line. And so Joey, our third business partner, he, he kind of heads up the cabinetry department. And so we do our own custom cabinetry. And so this, this facility will allow us to have a, it'll, it'll be our cabinet showroom. It will be our offices for all of our design and project management team. It will have our cabinet and mill workshop, as well as our paint finishing shop. And so all of that, we're moving our entire business from Millville Avenue into this facility on Maple Avenue. And so, yeah, that's in a nutshell what Meyer Brothers and Sons is.
Thank you.
You bet.
I have got the video ready whenever you want.
Perfect. This is a project I'm pretty excited about. Rick Meyer and Jeremy Culver from Meyer Brothers and Sons are here. They're going to speak after this brief presentation. A sales and development agreement for 1,000 Maple Avenue. This is what the project looks like now. And I'm here to tell you, all those ugly green doors are coming down, coming down, down.
Man, I'm Jeremy Culver, and one of the owners, Meyer Brothers and Sons, partner frickin' Joey Meyer, and this is the break. can see this forward. And we're ready. We got further plans. We've been saving money. So we're ready to invest. It's not something that we need to like get the keys and pause and try to find financing. We have financing ready. We have our schedule ready. We have our subs ready. We got pricing ready. So we're ready to, to really take this and move forward. So. But there is one small detail that if I back up, the reason why we were actually looking for a space in the first place is I remember one of the very first strategic planning retreats that Rick and Joey and myself and Dick and Joe and Jerry were all on. And we were doing some vision casting and, and just talking about what the future might hold. And the question was posed by, I can't remember who asked it, but somebody in the room asked the question, what's the, what is the number one thing that if you, you could more or less do anything to move Meyer Brothers forward, what would it be? And I'll never forget Rick's response. It was the first time I'd ever had this inkling of a showroom. He said, his response was, I would love to have a showroom that we can bring clients into that I'm not embarrassed of. Because the current place that we are in is just not a showroom of sorts that you're going to woo clients with. And so that planted the seed in me to know what was in Rick's heart of really wanting this space that we could bring clients into and show off the gifts and the talents of all of the people within Meyer Brothers. And so that was the first seed that was planted, that we should actually have a space of our own, because the space that we're currently in is a rental. And so that was probably nine years ago, when Rick made that comment. And so with patience and trusting the Lord, we finally kind of had this thought that maybe the freight All the glory to God. At the end of the day, Rick and Joey and I feel so blessed to be equally yoked as partners. All three are Christ followers. And we've had lots of conversations around Meyer Brothers and Sons being God's business that we get to steward. It's not our business, it's his. We get to, we're blessed to be a blessing, right? That's one of the phrases that I've heard often over the past 20 years. And we feel like God's favor has been on us because we strive to steward his business well. And the positive impact that I feel like this move is going to have, not only for us as a business, but just for the families that make up this business and the families that make up this community, I think is going to be significant. And it's only because of his work and the orchestration that he had in making all of this possible. So it's really exciting to see his hand at work.
They even make the train look attractive.
So yeah, what's next for us is, so we're, we'll get moved into our space, the leased space, about 6,500 square feet. We'll be building that out. We don't know who's going to lease it yet. We've had a few people inquire, but that'll be our next focus. And, and then beyond that, just hoping to have a positive impact in the Jefferson neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Next, we have 64 North Brookwood update. My name's Director Liz Hayden.
Good evening, city council and residents of Hamilton. The project I'm going to talk about is not quite as exciting as that. But I do have some updates to share with you. So this is the old, you know, Brookwood, Hamilton West Shopping Center, Brookwood Shopping Center, whatever you want to call it. We've, you, we've been back to talk about this prod, this, this site a number of times over the past few years, and wanted to give you an update on this highly visible, very large project on our, on our west side. So it's three, so the part, the project that we're talking about tonight is actually half of the site. And it's highlighted in the one, two, and three on the slide. It's the self-storage lot is the large parcel, and it's what the property owner is most interested, they want to open a self-storage facility. But they also own two outlots that, and as part of their plan development, we require them to make improvements on those outlots as a prior to getting a building permit for the project that they seek to do, the self-storage prop, project. So reminder, it got approval September 27th of last year. And they submitted a, they, then they started working on their building permits. They submitted them in February. Those were denied in basic, they knew they were going to be denied. And we said, you know, come, you know, you need to come with a plan to rehab the outlots. And we've been working with them since then. There, just as a reminder, on the timelines, they have the way that the approval is written, they had one.
But I do have some updates to share with you. So this is the old, you know, Brookwood, Hamilton was Shopping Center, Brookwood Shopping Center, whatever you want to call it. We've been back to talk about this site a number of times over the past few years and wanted to give you an update on this highly visible, very large project on our, on their west side. So it's three, so the part, the project that we're talking about tonight is actually half of the site. And it's highlighted in the one, two, and three on the slide. It's, the self-storage lot is the large parcel and it's what the property owner is most interested, they want to open a self-storage facility. But they also own two outlots that, and as part of their plan development, we require them to make improvements on those outlots as a, prior to getting a building permit for the project that they seek to do, the self-storage project. So reminder, it got approval September 27th of last year. And they submitted a, then they started working on their building permits. They submitted them in February. Those were denied and basically, they knew they were going to be denied. And we said, you know, come, you know, you need to come with a plan to rehab the outlots. And we've been working with them since then. There, just as a reminder, on the timelines, they have, the way that the approval is written, they had one year from the approval date to get the outlots fixed up. And then the way that our plan development regulations work, if they don't do this work in two years, their whole approval expires. Zooming in on the outlots, we, to remind you what the discussion was about what to do with these outlots was to repave and reseal the outlots. The areas in red are the areas in the worst shape. And they committed to doing, to repave those one and a half inches of new pavement and the rest of the lot would be patched and sealed. And they are putting in sidewalks along the Brookwood frontage, as well as a 10-foot landscape buffer on the outlots. There has been a lot of back and forth over the past few months. They thought that they might do, instead of doing some of the work, they might put some money in escrow. But ultimately, they've just decided to do all the work, which is a much simpler agreement between us and the property owner. And, you know, it's kind of worked out really well that we didn't get a chance to do the presentation a couple of weeks ago because they have actually started work in the past two weeks. So this is what they looked like in fall of 2023. This is what they looked like yesterday. They have started the process. They've, you know, ripped out the worst area and to prep to start repaving it. And they have their permit, they resubmitted their permit drawings today and hope to get everything done by the end of May. Any questions?
Any idea when the storage unit may open?
We are holding their building permit. We won't let them even start construction until they get the outlots completed.
I didn't understand that. Thank you.
They'll get, I'm sure they're anxious to get that started.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Liz, I drove through the lot, just happened to drive through the lot yesterday and saw how they had skimmed down, as evidenced in the pictures. But I, I was very glad to see that progress. Didn't know where they were going as far as time. I couldn't remember until I looked at our agenda and things like that. So I'm glad to see they're living up to their end of the bargain, decided not to escrow the funding and things like that. So it's a good outcome.
Yeah.
I hope it proves to be a viable project and it re-engages, re-enlivens Brookwood Avenue and things. So, good for us. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm glad to see progress as well. As you know, I've reached out to you and where are we at with this. And it's important that we get moving on this as one of our biggest investment areas, I feel. It is a very important investment area. I'm glad to see that they're moving forward. I'll continue to support them as long as they continue to move forward. However, what's going on with the other side of the lot? Do we know yet?
No. The owner, that's a different ownership group. And they are in contact with us some, but I have not been able to verify anything that they've told us about interest. They've said that they've had people interest, but I have not seen any movement. And to the best of my, and I've been talking to resident services, Tammy and Marcus have been working on it. They haven't even, my understanding is they haven't even been really cutting the grass on that side. And so we are billing them for work and also racking up civil citations off that side, is my understanding.
I'd like to be able to call you and talk to you about that.
Okay.
See the direction.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Nice shirt, Liz.
That was quite a group of special presentations today then. Audience of Citizens is next. That is an opportunity for individuals to make comments. They can speak now or speak when the item is up for vote on the council floor. All individuals who want to address council require to sign this public speaking book. And each speaker is allowed up to five minutes. Our first speaker is Rob Weil.
Mr. Mayor, Rob Weil, 54, Jeremy Court. I'm here to talk about the Safe Streets for All Grant, which is in the caucus agenda. I can wait till then or I can just ramble now. It's, it's up to you all, but.
Actually, it's up to you.
Okay. Then I think I'll go, I'll go ahead if, if that's okay. And first, yeah, Nancy and I are here to speak in support of the caucus report agenda item. Our ask of you is that you support this item as well. I'd like to start though by thanking all of you on council for the time to listen to me over the last few months, advocate for this. I would also in particular like to personally thank Liz Hayden and Alan Messer for the hours, and I mean hours, that they have, they've given to the committee. They've given to Nancy and me. And I kind of said tongue in cheek, we had a committee of the whole and then we had a committee of the while. And, and they were so patient and just embraced the ideas we brought to them. And, and it's been, it's been a wonderful process. I'd like to just real quickly recap you where we, recap where we've been, the steps that we've taken. With Alan and Liz's leadership, they recognized a data-driven need in the city. They hired a highly respected consultant. They developed cross-departmental team within the city. They formed a working group of residents, council members, council member Vaughn and Vice Mayor Pullman, and, and staff to work it. They listened to input. They evaluated all of our recommendations and they developed an action plan. Now for those of you keeping track, that's seven steps. So after step seven, as some of you may know, comes step eight. Step eight is the money. The money is always step eight. That's where you all come in. To support this project, it takes action. It takes courage. It's a huge commitment. But it's transformational for our city. It's transformational. The data, accident data that Alan presented two weeks ago, I think it speaks volume of the position we are lagging in the state. We are worst in the state per capita for vehicle and bike accidents. We are third from the bottom in the state for pedestrian and vehicle accidents. The time is now. The money is at the federal level. We need to ask for it. So step eight, as I said, is up to you. I'd like to leave you with this thought. This is one of those raw thoughts, but I think it's completely apropos. The ancient Greek physicist Archimedes is reported to have said, and I may paraphrase, "Change is difficult. But if you give me a lever and a place to stand, I can move the world." So we're here tonight to tell you that for Nancy and me, our lever is this Safe Streets for All Grant. And where we stand is firmly behind Alan and Liz to get this accomplished. So thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you all for asserting.
Thank you, Rob. Mayor?
Please. Rob, first of all, thank you for all your input. I enjoy working with you on this committee and everybody else. The numbers are staggering. I never knew, you know, the dangers that we face every day on our streets. It's been, as I told you earlier, I drive around Cincinnati every once in a while. I see all these things they're doing now. And I'm like, man, that's a good idea. And that's a good idea. So it is very eye-opening to see, you know, these reports that we see. And I do appreciate both of yours, you and Nancy. I appreciate the work that you put into it. We got a great team there too with Liz and Alan. So we appreciate that. Good program.
Thank you.
Police departments also been actively involved, the data and the leadership too. So it's been a great cross, cross office, cross city team, all the, all the departments are involved. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Honest add-on to what Eric said. Rob and Nancy have been role models to what I would hope everyone would do. It's easy to complain, but Rob and Nancy have done their homework. You have researched. You don't just come and say, you need to do this. You come with a plan. And I really appreciate that, being on a committee that I know that Alan and Liz have put tremendous amount of time in it and surveys and everything else. But I appreciate when we have people who step up and say, I have an idea. Let me help rather than just complain. So thank you both and all the citizens who have given feedback on the safe streets. We don't know what goes on in every neighborhood. So it's important to have people speak up, tell us what it is, even if it's a pothole. You know, if you let us know, then we can address it because we can't be everywhere all the time. So thank you all.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
And Rob, I appreciate when we had coffee together, the visit and just hearing the, the concept of where we have been. Alan and Liz's updates as to where we are today as a city. The numbers were staggering, as you just mentioned, and, and where we have not attended to safe streets in the past. And what we have an option to be able to do in, in moving forward, as you said, federal monies are there to be able to be appreciated and to make Hamilton a better place for today and for tomorrow and for our future, for all the kids that were here tonight, that tomorrow will be theirs. So thank you for your vision. Thank you for your passion, your ongoing support of everything that we're trying to do here in our city. I really appreciate it. So does the rest of council. Thank you all.
You're welcome. Mr. Mayor, may I add one thing? Please, this, I'll be brief. You know, the traffic congestion in town has often been a subject of conversation. We are experiencing that because of the success that has been taking place in town the last 15 years. We didn't have a traffic issue 15 years ago. But make no mistake, it's time to redefine the problem. Great places are defined by walkability. That's the way people interact with the community. We can help cure congestion, not just by speeding up cars and changing timing of lights, but getting people out of their cars. So they walk from their neighborhoods into our business districts and into our downtown. And again, the great things are for Hamilton. And I'm really, Nancy and I feel fortunate that you all are serving and that staff is doing great work. So thank you again.
Thank you for your service to Hamilton because you were there when Joshua started and you're still active visiting today. Thank you. Jeremy Culver already spoke, but David Stark has not spoken yet. David Stark.
Hello and good evening, council. David Stark, 222 High Street, Department 308, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, otherwise known as the Arch Space Hamilton Law's Building. A building which, as we're all probably aware by now, I think I've tried to make everyone aware by now, has a MCD flood assessment rate going up nine times, nine percent, nine times for about $1,200 to almost $11,000 a year. So I'm here tonight to represent on behalf of the artist of our city, who I think make it look so shiny and pretty, an acknowledgement of gratitude that each and every one of you, in each and every one of your own ways, has risen up to this very significant challenge, this potentially momentum busting challenge our city is facing. And because of a dogged, ferocious, and outright leadership, a stand that said no, we could see this as a momentum building event in the history of our city. It's not just on behalf of the artists though. It's anyone who's been involved in the Keep Hamilton afloat awareness campaign. It's anyone who has shared something on the internet. It's who's called a friend, who's come to a rally. It's all these people. I hope you understand and know, this is a great moment in our city's recent history that so many have rallied. When have we all been so united on any one thing but this? Sometimes that wolf at your door can really rally the sheep into the army. We know that we are. So I thank you for that. I thank you that you called for a two-year moratorium at your last regularly scheduled session of council. I don't know if you guys checked the internet while you're in here. Maybe you're not allowed to, but since we've been gathered, Journal News came out with an article stating that some 16 Ohio lawmakers have essentially sent a letter to the MCD requesting the same. 16 lawmakers, I think we got, I think we got some important people's attention on this subject now. For all of you who have worked doggedly and all of us who have worked quietly in our own ways, I want to say how grateful I am for this city in this moment. Now, at our last meeting, some 25 different Hamiltonians did the same thing in 25 different ways. But we did end with a pledge that we all took serious, that the MCD would be reconvening with their full board this time. And as you all know, as many know, right here, May 3rd for that session. I also want to express to you all that I've received a large number of concerns from people who pointed out that May 3rd is also the last date of the exception filing period. And so while we are going to hope for the absolute best, I'm an optimist. But the Keep Hamilton afloat awareness campaign has no plan to stop any of the initiatives of this grassroots level movement until we are all very comfortable with a plan. We must continue to, to beg our folks who are affected to file these exceptions. People ask me, say, Dave, what do I put on here? I'm not a scientist. I'm not a silly, I don't know what qualifies with this. This is equally understood as a registry of objection. I don't know what they want to put on there. The ceiling hides at Arch Space or 16 foot or something on the third floor. I don't know. I don't know what that means. But I know that I'm going to put that personally, I wasn't given enough time to properly understand this issue. If I'm going to be taxed, I want to know about it. I want to be involved in the issue. I object on the grounds of the MCD assessment at da-da-da-da address. We still need to get all our people knowing. There's a lot of people who know this from the internet of things, but I tell you, there's a lot of Hamiltonians who have no clue. I saw some who, who thought that this was a city initiative against them. There is great confusion on this matter. And we have a window left of pronounced time to clarify that up. To that end, I want to invite each of you next Tuesday, I believe that's the 30th, to Municipal Brew Works for a special MCD letter writing night. We will have the objections forms there that folks can file for their exemption. We will have our laptops out. We're going to have a little bit of help from the city. I think we may even be doing some of this under the banner of the tent of 17 strong. So I would love to see as many folks who are still concerned, we can be civil but still register a protest to still get involved. It is not time to lay down the fight just yet. File exemptions, write those legislators. Maybe there'll be a change.org petition. Really, this is a moment to celebrate the strength and power of a connected Hamilton. I tell you what, I'm proud of y'all tonight. Thank you.
What time is that?
We're going to start at 6 o'clock. CFG and the family are going to begin playing at 6:30 to 8 because it's not a Hamilton event if there's not live music.
That's right.
I like it.
All right. That takes care of audience of citizens. We now go to the consent agenda. That includes items such as all staff reports, all caucus reports, and the March 2024 financial investment report, which I thought was pretty positive. Me the whole, that gives us a chance on council to ask questions, provide direction, or comment on reports. I'll set the motions regular meeting be recessed and the committee the whole take place.
I move.
Second. Vice Mayor Pullman, second by council member Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Turning down that motion is carried. We go in committee the whole at 7:12. Mr. City Clerk?
Sure. Our first item for our presentations will be a presentation by our Director of Utility Services, Mr. Bill Hudson, our utility operations, Mr. Bill Hudson.
Evening, council, mayor, citizens of Hamilton. I'm here to request the waiving of advertising for the overhaul and reinstallation of the drive unit on our primary clarified, primary clarifier at the water reclamation facility. The water reclamation facility needs to purchase a replacement drive for one of the three primary clarifiers, which is out of service right now. The water rec utilizes three primary clarifiers for primary clarification of all wastewater from the aeration removal tank. Each clarifier is Each clarifier is, is as a 10 MGD design. Uh, one of the drive units was repaired in 2020 and overhauled. The other two drive units on the other two clarifiers are approximately 24 years old right now. And one of them is out of service because the gearbox, the drive box itself is, is not repairable now. We, we've decided to replace the older IMCO C60HT drive unit with an OV, OVI, whatever, C60HT improved design. It is the same unit the OV, IVO company purchased IMCO. So it's the same unit, they just, they bought the rights to everything. We, we've decided to stick with the, the same style drive unit. To keep KBO and, and repair, maintenance, keep same parts, same repair parts for each unit so we don't have to stock as much, just keep our prices down. We intend to purchase the new drive through the local distributor out of Fort Wright, Kentucky. Just an idea when I say clarifiers, the three clarifiers at the top there, the one that's empty is the one that's not in use now. It's a drone shot at the water rec plant. You can see it's a big unit. They're big tanks, hold 10 MGD a day and go through it. And then just a picture of the, the drive unit on top. And if I go back, the drive unit spins the apparatus around the tank to scrape the bottom and top of the tank off is what it does. So we're just wanting to get the one back in service and purchase that without going through all the advertising. Because as you can see, this is all pretty unique stuff. It's not like they make, you can go to the store and buy it off the shelf. It's all custom made stuff. That's all I have. If there's any questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Bill, is, is that piece of apparatus, I'll call it because of its sheer size, it's not a motor like this, is that available? From the, from the distributor of Fort Wright that it's?
You can get it and modify it to fit your existing tank, yes.
Gotcha, good.
Yes. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, next up for agenda items two through four will be a presentation from our planning director, Ms. Liz Hayden.
Different height. Hello again. All right, so we have three conditional uses coming from Planning Commission tonight. The first is 460 South Third Street. And this is a conditional use to use a property zone, traditional neighborhood three, as a duplex. Um, just worth kind of noting, there is a, um, the heir of the, um, Colligan Funeral Home has, has purchased, I think it's like 25 properties. Uh, there's a, so it's new ownership and they're going to try to be working on rehabilitating a lot of these properties over the next few years, trying to figure out what, what to do. And this is the first project that they're doing. This is directly south of Sims Park, and it's a long vacant building. And it, and since it's, even though it's, it is built as two different units, but since it's been vacant for so long, they actually have to come back to get a conditional use request to use it as a duplex. Also, it was built where it was, it was a mixed use building where the first floor was retail and the second floor was, um, an apartment. And they're asking to use that first floor as an apartment as well. And just given the, um, design and location of the building, Planning Commission recommended this approval of this request. Do you have any questions on this one?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So Liz, will these be like rental, like apartment rentals? Is that what it's going to be? They're not for resale, so, um, as far as you know.
They, my, I think their goal is to hold on to as many of the prop- well, we're working with them on a variety of things. But yes, they, their, their first two projects they're talking about doing is this red brick and then the bill, the other one that you see in that, um, picture. And that their plan would be to hold on to them and rent them.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Quick question for items two, three, and four. Do any of these proceed to council for vote or?
At all.
Only if you request it. If you concur with the recommendations of Planning Commission, this will be the last that you see them.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. The next one is a conditional use for a tattoo shop to open at 1341 Main Street. You can see it highlighted in red. It is in the shopping center next to Kelly's Donuts. Um, and they are a conditional use request, but they, the, they, you know, met the conditions the, of approval, they're, they don't need any variances. Um, so, uh, they're, you know, planning just to move into this retail space if council approves it. And as part of this approval process, we have asked to, and they have agreed to add a dumpster enclosure around the dumpster, which is in light blue. There's a square highlighting and it's pretty visible off Main Street. Um, and when you're in the planning department, you notice lots of like dumpsters and signs and things that other people probably don't normal, but it's really visible. So they're going to enclose it in, uh, in a dumpster enclosure and then also add sidewalk along the parcel along Main Street. So it's just one little, one more step towards getting our sidewalks on Main Street. Any questions on this one? The last one is for a VA clinic, um, out at 7215 Gateway Avenue. And the way our regulations are structured, basically all, um, clinics of all kinds are a conditional use and require an additional review. And this is requesting three variances. Um, and I highlighted one of them, uh, that is the, the sidewalk, adding a sidewalk along Hamilton Mason Road. And also the, uh, requesting, um, a variance from the setback. They don't have a landscape buffer proposed, um, along Hamilton Mason. And it's the citing that there's a lot of utilities and also a swale that is impacting their ability to do that, um, in an easy way. So they were requesting a variance on that. And here are the elevations proposed. I want to note that the, the entrance is off Gateway. Um, and the north elevation is what's facing Hamilton Mason. And I'm still kind of working with them to see if I can get, um, a little bit more visual interest facing Hamilton Mason, uh, more brick, um, and some more landscaping, since that's such a highly visible corridor. So what we've discussed is that, um, hopefully there'll be some enhancements, um, through the building permit process. Any questions on this one?
Want to say that, that the Gateway Avenue one up there definitely addresses a need for the city of Hamilton's residents and those who live around us. And Planning Commission did have healthy discussion and good questions about really all, all three of these projects would have been front of planning.
Here's.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, I'll cover the next couple of presentations. Hello, mayor, members of council, Daniel Tiedemann, city clerk. I've got actually two presentations to talk about. Uh, first one's agenda item number five, which is a liquor permit transfer application. It's for a D5A and D6 liquor permits. I believe D5As are full service to be served on premises, but the A deals with it being tailored to hotels of a certain size. And D6 deals with Sunday sales. So we're just doing, dealing with a simple transfer of ownership for this application. Uh, it's more of a formality. Do we have any questions about this? Moving on, okay. Uh, so the item that I really wanted to talk about is, uh, agenda item number 18. This is a resolution supporting a grant application for the One Ohio Recovery Foundation Regional Grant Application. I'm going to oversimplify this when I say this, but the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding was a settlement in result of the opioid epidemic, which we had with many pharmaceutical companies. Uh, out of this, the One Ohio Recovery Foundation was formed when they received 55% of funds from this settlement, uh, which can then be distributed to 19 regions across the state. So, uh, for this round of funding, we have about $51.19 million across 19 regions. Uh, Hamilton, which is located in Butler County, is in region 14. And we've been allocated, uh, $7.18 million to be spread amongst multiple counties, as you can see. So this will, there's funding available, but it will likely be competitive. Uh, so city staff had a meeting not too long ago and we discussed that, uh, a pretty good candidate for this grant funding would be our fire department. Uh, so specifically, the most important item would be the LifePAC 35 monitors. And that is the price per unit, it's $60,000 per unit. And we also have 14, 14 squads, I believe. So at the minimum, it's $840,000 that we're applying for off the bat. Uh, there's also other equipment, uh, the motorized stair, uh, striker stair chairs. These are, in my limited research, used for helping people getting downstairs out of buildings. We also have medic units, which are the ambulances that you see around town. We're debating on applying for one to three of those units, as well as AEDs, which are $3,000 per unit. There's also additional equipment in mind that we're potentially applying for. So out of the $7 million that's available, we're gonna, we're gonna tailor the application to see what we can get out of this. But we really are going to make the monitors our highest priority. Uh, and also the one other thing I want to mention is that there's no match required for this grant funding. Uh, if you have any questions about the equipment, I believe our fire chief, Chief Akleburker's in the audience, if you want to talk to him about that. But do we have any questions about this grant?
No question, I had a comment, though, just for the record, region 14 gets the largest amount of money than any other region in the state of Ohio. And we're the largest county in the region, and we're the largest city in the largest county in the region. So I sincerely hope that Hamilton and Butler County does get, uh, multiple grants out of this $7 million. And, um, the submission window for grants is starting to close. I think May 2nd might be the last day, if I'm not mistaken. And you've got to register your entity before you can submit a grant. And there is still available time to do that. But I sincerely hope that Hamilton, um, and Butler County gets multiple, multiple grants out of that $7.1 million.
Yeah, and I should mention that we've already registered, uh, online. We're kind of slowly working our way through the application. Uh, and I will mention that, uh, from some of the numbers that I've seen with, uh, calls for service per year, as well as drug-related calls for service and accidental ODs, both in Butler County and Hamilton, uh, this is definitely something that would be needed for our fire department.
Mr. Mayor? Please. Thank you for sharing the, the sheer numbers, Pat, and how impactful it will be for our city. Chief and, and Daniel, thank you for allocating and saying how critically important these opportunities for our fire department to have, the necessary lifesaving equipment and, and the new apparatus and things like that. Daniel, to you too, as we discussed now in your role of coordinating grants, thank you for grabbing onto this opportunity. As we have learned and experienced in our city, uh, grants, if you don't ask for them, you don't get them. So importantly, uh, you're doing the work upfront in, in pre, pre-deadline work that needs to be done. So again, to you and all the people working on this, thank you. Uh, we hope that in the, in the time of allocation, you can come back and say, yes, we did receive these grants. Thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Uh, next up for agenda item number six will be a presentation by our Director of Business Services, Ms. Christy Nkara.
Good evening, mayor, members of council, residents of Hamilton. I'm here tonight to provide a brief update, summary of caucus item number six regarding Utility Economic Development Agreement between the city and 80 Acres. As you know, the city currently serves 80 acres under an existing EDA. Staff is proposing an amendment to that EDA that would extend the incentive for one additional year. So that time period would be the only change from the existing agreement. 80 Acres has expressed interest in continuing to grow operations and expand within Hamilton. So the purpose of this additional amendment is to continue to support them in that growth. As they are today, they provide economic benefit to the city in many ways. Um, one, as the number three electric user within the city, um, but also through their contributions to the general fund through income tax and the kilowatt hour tax. Um, so the next steps for this, the first reading on May 8th, second reading on May 22nd. Do you have any questions about this one?
Thank you for the presentation.
Uh, next up for agenda item number seven will be a presentation by our Director of Economic Development, Mr. Jody Gunderson.
Mayor of City Council, I'm Jody Gunderson, Director of Economic Development. Uh, the legislation that you have before you tonight is an ordinance, amending ordinance OR 19-5-40 to extend the exemption from taxation granted thereunder for the Champion Mill Project, authorizing compensation payments. And during the extension period for the, uh, into the Hamilton School District. And there's really three, um, changes within this amendment. Um, one is it extends the tip district for an additional 30 years. Uh, the other is that during that period of time, it also extends the agreement that we have with the school district. And then, um, also equally as important is it, it will strengthen the terms of the outstanding bond agreements that we have, um, for infrastructure within this area. With that, if you have any questions?
Thank you, Jody.
Thanks.
All right, next up for, uh, agenda items eight and nine will be presentations by our Assistant Director of Engineering, Mr. Alan Messer.
Uh, good evening, mayor, members of council, Hamilton community. Last week I was here and we, you adopted the Safe Streets For All Plan. Um, that was the first step in being able to apply for grant funding that's available, really with the infrastructure bill for a five-year time period. We don't know that it will be renewed, but there's essentially, it's, we're in the order of a billion dollars a year available for this type of safety grants. And you had to have this plan in place in order to be eligible. But today is the harder question. I think most people had no issues with everyone's essentially for safety and, and zero deaths. And, um, this aligns with that plan, aligns with the vision zero, which is, uh, the goal of zero deaths and, uh, serious injuries on Hamilton's roadways. We are asking for $15 million in grant funding, which will require 3.75 additional million local funds. Approximately half of that 3.75 million are things that like upgrading ADA ramps that when we get there with resurfacing or any other road project, we would be doing eventually anyway. Um, the other half is money specific to this. So the, the overall project would be 18.75 million. And how we came to that figure was looking at prior grant awards. Um, what was the sweet spot for something a city of Hamilton's size could reasonably expect to receive? And that was somewhere in the range of 12 to 15 million in grant funding. We're going to take the 18.75 million and basically work backwards, taking that list of priorities that we developed in the action plan and seeing what's the most we can get essentially for that money. There really is a, a decision here today as to that funding. It will be over at least a couple of calendar years, um, probably three. I should mention, the safety improvements that we're targeting are the intersections. The, the intersections get us the biggest bang for the buck. It will maybe be in the order of 70 intersections that will receive some kind of treatment. It could be anywhere from signs like what, what went up at Cleveland Northwest Washington. Those greatly, I don't know how many of you noticed the larger stop signs and the flashing red on top and the stop ahead, those kind of things. That kind of improvement, you might get done for 5,000. You start doing, having to do handicap ramps, you're up at least 25,000 per intersection. You start talking signals, you get into the hundreds of thousands, those type of things. The other linear improvement we're looking at, one of the, the top ones that came to the, on the list were Route 4, High Street, Main Street. the, on the list were Route 4, High Street, Main Street. We've already done quite a bit on High and Main. Route 4 could use some assistance. I admit to being one that's been given a speeding ticket on the stretch of Route 4 from Grand to High, and not because I necessarily drive recklessly, but what we're looking to do here is to make it feel like you're driving fast. Our law enforcement's done a great job in the last couple of years reducing speeding violations throughout the city, but still, if people feel like they should be going a certain speed, a lot of them, including myself, sometimes will do that. These are the improvements, traffic calming, that's one of the number ones, pedestrians and bicycle network improvements, street lighting, again, something that we might otherwise do that could fall within that local match that we could be doing anyway, but we can capture credit if it's done with the project as our local match, and then signal improvements. A signal improvement we're thinking of is not necessarily a signal improvement, but adding a mid-block crossing on High Street. When we did the East High Corridor, we took out the intersections at 8th and 10th, and that's good for vehicular reasons, because you don't have all those additional delays and the potential for cars crossing in front of one another. But then people that want to walk across High Street have to go an entire block just to get to a crossing, and then walk back an entire block just to get to where they wanted. And I'm sure we've all seen quite a bit of jaywalking that's, that's there, and that's some of that. This is difficult to see, but I do want to point out, I mentioned the plan was a living plan. This is page 34 of that plan. We've already tweaked some of the recommended improvements, and I expect every six months or so, as we continue updating that plan, if you remember, we got money to update that plan, still working through the agreement with the federal government, but we'll start using that money to look at these intersections in much more detail and identify what specifically needs to be done at each intersection. This is just a reminder, I went through this last week, but this is the maps of the pedestrian bicycle crashes and unfortunately, the fatalities of which there were 16 in a five-year period. And then this again is a just reiteration of what was here last week for your packet. Are there any questions that you have at this time?
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
May I ask Mario Andretti a question? Alan, where, when you talked about a pedestrian traffic device, where would it be, would it be at 8th Street, or would it be at 10th? Where, where might that kind of fall?
Possibly both. We would do it at the intersection, because that's a logical place, and it would be timed with the other signals. It'd be similar to the signal that went at the Park Avenue, at, at the end of the High Main Bridge on Park Avenue.
Yes.
So it wouldn't add any delay to user, to vehicles, but it would give somebody a safe place to stop without having to walk.
You bet. And as you mentioned, there, there is a very noticeable amount of jaywalking up there. People with carriages, people walking bicycles, sometimes on bikes, anything, so it's, it's really not safe, and it's, that's why I wondered potentially what that might bring, so thank you.
Mario. Thank you for that report.
This one is the third intergovernmental agreement related to North Hamilton Crossing. We are, the first agreement was to start the study to identify the needs. That was all locally funded between the city and the TID, seed money of sorts to get the project rolling. The second agreement was to accept the track money. We did receive $2 million in track grant money towards the project to advance the feasibility study and to get into preliminary design. This agreement is to receive or to allocate the funding to match the grant money that was received for the North Washington, West Elkton, North B Street dual roundabouts. Here's a picture of the roundabouts. They are common to every, every potential alignment of North Hamilton Crossing. Therefore, they're able to be pulled out as a separate project, and we did receive $5.000, $5.9 million in grant funding. It's a kind of odd amount there. You see at the bottom, 79% is the grant funding. We got an extra point for going the extra 1% on our application, and so that's, that's how we arrived at a 21% local match on this one. This is a summary of the funding. The TID will, unlike the other projects where the TID has received money and on behalf of the city of Hamilton, Tylersville, the Route 4 and Bell Project, where we hold the contract, in this case, the TID will hold the construction contract. So it will be almost identical to South Hamilton Crossing and the relationship we had there. They come to the city for, you know, any significant questions, approvals. They will be buying some pieces of right-of-way in, in the name of the city. On South Hamilton Crossing, if you remember, the parcels that were bought were bought immediately in the name of the city, so we don't end up like on 129 where years from now, we have parcels that are owned by the Butler County TID within the city of Hamilton. And then these are the amounts. Again, it's another healthy local match, a little over $2 million. We do have some, besides the OKI, 5.9 million, we have some raised, or I'm sorry, I put raised money, it's actually, should say track, and potentially congressional discretionary spending that can go towards that as well. And then there's the, the timeframe for the project, looking to get construction underway in 2026. Are there questions about this one?
No questions, but one comment is that I've actually had, people ask me and say, Tim, when are the roundabouts coming? So people are aware of the project, Alan, and they'd be ready for it tomorrow if we said it's going to be in '24 or '25 rather than '26, but nicely enough, there's acceptance, and people look at it as a, a further way to reduce congestion and are embracing the roundabout concept, so that's good for us. Thank you for the engagement and having people in the community understand through all of our community meetings about North Hamilton Crossing and what it will bring eventually and things like that, but thanks for all the work.
Thank you. And I did want to, I wanted to thank Rob and Nancy for their input on the safe routes. They, they were certainly not past their, and a lot of really good ideas for the Safe Streets project and continue to be advocates for it. I want to thank them. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Alan.
That concludes your presentations.
I'll set the motion committee, the whole be closed.
So.
Second. Motion of Councilmember Nab. Second of Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:41. I'll set the motion to regular meeting and be reconvened.
I move.
Second. Motion of Councilmember Fear. Second of Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that, please.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Go to agenda item number 11, second reading of an ordinance.
An ordinance approving a right-of-way dedication plat of parts, parts of city lots 3126867935086508450851559216971696and1695 as public right-of-way of the intersection of Main Street, Melville Avenue, and Eaton Avenue, First Ward, South Side, Save Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn. Second by Councilmember Ryan. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 6-0. One abstention.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 12, second reading of an ordinance involving right-of-way for B Street at Park Avenue.
An ordinance approving a right-of-way dedication plat to dedicate parts of city lots 1519151229035and32334 as right-of-way for North B Street at Park Avenue, First Ward, North Side, Save Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Nab. Second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Comments or questions on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Go to agenda item number 11, second reading of an ordinance.
An ordinance approving a right-of-way dedication plat to dedicate parts of city lots 1519151229035086508450851559216971696and1695 as public right-of-way of the intersection of Main Street, Melville Avenue, and Eaton Avenue, First Ward, South Side, Save Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn. Second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that, please.
More abstain. Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 6-0. One abstention.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 12, second reading of an ordinance involving right-of-way for B Street at Park Avenue.
An ordinance approving a right-of-way dedication plat to dedicate parts of city lots 1519151229035and32334 as right-of-way for North B Street at Park Avenue, First Ward, North Side, Save Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Nab. Second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Comments or questions on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Go to agenda item number 13, second reading of emergency ordinance involving the major amendment to Plan Hamilton.
An emergency ordinance approving a major amendment to Plan Hamilton, the city's comprehensive plan, by adopting the proposed update, city of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn. Second by Councilmember Ryan. Discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote on 13.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Go to agenda item number 14, second reading of emergency ordinance involving a promissory note in Vora Technology Park.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a cancellation of promissory note and work its release related to the outstanding balance of a promissory note executed by Vora Technology Park Incorporated, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Nab. Second by Councilmember Ryan. Discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Go to new legislation, agenda item number 15, two readings of emergency ordinance involving the seasonal maintenance pay range.
An emergency ordinance amending emergency ordinance number EOR 2024-3-17 by amending and correcting the alphabetical index found in Exhibit Number 1 for the newly revised pay range for class code 110, seasonal maintenance laborer, first of two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the rules be suspended, the said ordinance be read a second time by its title. Second.
Councilmember Vice Mayor Pullman. Second by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that, please.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
A second reading of the emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance amending emergency ordinance number EOR 2024-3-17 by amending and correcting the alphabetical index found in Exhibit Number 1 for the newly revised pay range for class code 110, seasonal maintenance laborer, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted. Second.
Councilmember Vice Mayor Pullman. Second by Councilmember Ryan. Any questions or comments on this agenda item? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
We go to agenda item number 16, which is first reading of an ordinance involving the Hamilton Development Finance Authority, involving its powers and jurisdiction, as well as organizational meeting and appointment of the initial members.
An ordinance creating the Hamilton Development Finance Authority, establishing the powers and jurisdiction of the authority, establishing the Board of Directors of the authority, and consenting to the appointment of the initial members of that board, and providing for the organizational meeting of the Board of Directors of the authority, first reading.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 17, resolution involving our concrete repair and resurfacing program.
A resolution ordering the resurfacing and repair of streets and concrete where necessary and appropriate on various streets and avenues in the city of Hamilton, Ohio, 2024 through 2025, concrete repair and resurfacing program assessment rule.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted. Second.
Councilmember Vice Mayor Pullman. Second by Councilmember Nab. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Go to agenda item number 18, which is a resolution involving the One Ohio Recovery Foundation Grant.
A resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the One Ohio Recovery Foundation 2024 regional grant for improvements to the Hamilton Fire Department, and authorizing and directing the city manager to accept the same and comply with conditions of the grant.
Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the resolution be adopted. Second.
Councilmember Fear. Second by Councilmember Vaughn. Any discussion about this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Moller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Thank you. Audience, city manager. Is there any manager?
Not seen.
Nate?
Sir.
Audience, city council and board and commission reports.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
We had the pleasure of hosting Derek James from Amtrak. He was the, the Director of Government Affairs. He came down to speak to the business community. Want to thank Dan Bates for getting all that set up, really appreciate that. We had a very exciting presentation. I think Derek hit a home run. He definitely got everybody excited, so stay tuned on that, where we are working on some very exciting things to, to continue to build support for, for Amtrak. So stay tuned, but we are moving quickly, and I think the future looks really bright. So fingers crossed, the state of Ohio is going to come in and help us, but I think we're doing a pretty good job of advocating our state legislature. So momentum is building, and it's, it's building, so there's excitement, so stay tuned, we got some good stuff coming out. to say thank you or for fighting. Um, we faced some very serious adversity, uh, in the last ten days. And I just want to say thank you to my colleagues for, for standing up and for fighting for our city, our residents and our businesses. Um, fighting as one unit. And I, I just can't tell you how much it means to me that every person to the right of me has, has joined us. We, we all came together as one unit, as, as one team to, to fight for our community in the face of a very destructive entity. So, um, I just want to say thank you. And, uh, to the residents and businesses of Hamilton, we, we are not done. And we are going to continue to fight like hell until we get what we want. Okay? And as, um, I think David alluded to that this evening, um, this afternoon, State Representative Rodney Crease sent me a letter that, uh, they are sending to, uh, MCD. And this letter was signed by fifteen state, uh, legislatures and legislators. And there's a little mix of, of some state senators in there telling them they need to stop this process. It's going to be destructive to the city. So a huge thank you to our, our state folks for listening, um, for, for fighting for us. And a huge thank you to Congressman Davidson. They, they sent me a letter this morning as well. And, uh, that is going to Governor Dewine and Senator Huffman. So, um, the fight has reached Columbus, has reached DC, and I love it. And we're going to continue to scream, kick, and get louder. And, um, we have a lot of friends on this, uh, Liberty Township trustees. Um, I've, I've talked to, they, they want to help us out. Westchester Township trustees, they want to help us out. Uh, Councilman Lauer and I went down to Fairfield, spoke to their city council. We got them wound up. And if, if anything has, has come from this situation, silver lining, is the amount of respect the city has outside of its jurisdiction is only growing. We have a lot of friends and a lot of other townships and cities that truly care about what's going on in Hamilton. And they do not want to see us fail. They are going to help us fight. And I'm just so appreciative of, of, of everyone joining, joining this movement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mack.
Mr. Lauer. I have two items, uh, on behalf of the Seventeen Strong Outreach Committee for the next soc- the next social mixer is Monday, May first at Rotary Park Cleanup. Um, we'll start at five PM followed by a social mixer at six PM. We will have games. Door will be available and it will be a great time to make Hamilton shine and meet our, meet your neighbors across the seventeen neighbors, neighborhoods. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I also would like to address, um, situation with MCD. Um, I am extremely proud of how, I'm extremely proud to be on city council in a town that comes out and fights together. Uh, the recent discussions have, with MCD has been challenging and emotional. Uh, I think us, we speak for everybody on, on city council. Man, thanks. We appreciate it. Our city team has done a great job, um, filling in. Mr. Bukkite and Mr. Bukkite stepping into the fire. Um, I'm very appreciative of your efforts. Um, and your staff has done a great job. I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Wardman and Mallory, um, for just really being, I, I used a lot of information that was given by you guys. So thank you. Um, however, um, I had a great conversation with someone in the economic development team last night. Um, and I, you know, I asked about the impact on, uh, that would, it would have if MCD came in and devastated our town. Um, and he assured, he assured me that he did not believe that the people of Hamilton would stand for that. I'm very proud to be a part of that. I see what has, uh, what has happened over the last few weeks. And I'm excited about our efforts. Um, it has reminded me of our resiliency to fight against anything as a unit. We have come together. It has reminded me of how loyal and strong our neighborhoods are. It's great. I appreciate what David Starks has done. I appreciate Casey Gomez, um, coming out. Appreciate every citizen that came and spoke. We had some great, great people speak. But most of all, man, I am very proud that we are fighting this together. This is wrong and we will continue to fight. I appreciate Michael Ryan and, and his efforts with, uh, some of our senators and Warren Davidson. This is a great fight and we're here. And you know what? This represents Hamilton. As we forced to all this economic development over the years, the last ten years that you guys have worked so hard on, it is refreshing to know that the pride of Hamilton still exists and that we will come together and unite against this MCD proposal. Uh, we will not let, what you have done, we will not let that down. And I'm so proud of the citizens of Hamilton. And on May third, I hope we get more people.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Brennan.
I echo, uh, Michael's and, and Joel's comments. Um, I have some other things that I'd like to share with everyone that's watching tonight, everyone in our audience. Um, and that is about our Hamilton hometown heroes veterans banners. Many of you have called Jack Whalen and I. Three of the other members of the, of our campaign are also receiving calls of, uh, from our, our committee, I should say. Um, and banners that are placed are the banners that were the initial class of two thousand and twenty-three. The city started to install those strategically throughout the city on Main Street, B Street, uh, Grand Boulevard. You'll start to see the new banners being integrated into that footprint as well as continuing out High Street and then also in other places, perhaps on Martin Luther King Boulevard. The reason for that, last year we had a hundred and twenty-six banners total. This year we have over two hundred and twenty-five more new banners that have been applied for that are being made right now. Our city teams will be installing those banners prior to Armed Forces Day on Saturday, May the eighteenth, which is going to be our dedication ceremony for all banners at noon at Armstead Park at the corner of Main and D Streets. We'll close D Street between Main Street and Ross Avenue, again to be able to celebrate all three hundred and fifty-plus banners, uh, that are, that are going to be installed in our city. We are overwhelmed, the committee of six of us are overwhelmed at the outpouring and the, the sheer patriotism that all of you who have applied for banners are having banners made for loved ones and for those lost in service to our country. Last year we had eleven Killed in Action Soldiers banners. This year we have another seven more and the numbers keep growing. We had to stop taking applications two and a half weeks ago. So the, all of the processes could take place, the banners could be made, the hardware could be installed on the light poles and then the, the banners placed on the light poles, on the rods and secured to the rods. The banners will come down again after Veterans Day in November. They will be cleaned, they will be stored, and they'll be put back up again next year as we receive new applications during our five-month application process for two thousand and twenty-five from November through the end of March. So please know residents that your applications will be taken again next year. Uh, there is no end in sight to the patriotism and to the, to the honor that we have for our veterans who are still in the service today and veterans all the way back. We have two banners from the Revolutionary War in the War of eighteen twelve. And we've also got new members from, uh, banners for, uh, those who fought in the First World War and on up through current. So we're really, really proud. And please know that the city will continue to shine, uh, in, in respect for all of our veterans and all of our heroes. Thanks very much.
Please.
I just, well, first of all, I want to say thank you again. Um, council, just I did owe everything you said. Um, we've got a good fight going and we're going to stay strong. David, thank you again. You looked good in the paper today. So I think it was today you were in the paper. So good shot there, smiling the whole time. It's always great. Tim, thanks again for the, uh, veterans. I, I really can't wait to see my dad's up there. It's, um, I wish you was alive to see it, but it was, uh, I'm real excited. And actually where the location it's going, it's, it's going to be, uh, kind of heartwarming. And, uh, my mother is still alive, so she gets to see it. So it's going to be pretty awesome. Uh, I just want to remind everybody, um, one of my favorite committees I've won is SELF, which, um, stands for, uh, supports and encourages lower income families. And it's, they're absolutely one of the best committees I've ever been on. And they've got their awards banquet this weekend. Um, I know a lot of people probably can't go to it, but you can help them. Um, but if you can't, there are tickets still available. I should say that there are still tickets available. And, um, it's a good theme this year too, because it's cowboy. You got a rodeo up. So it's, uh, I can't wait to get my cowboy hat and my boots because I love that stuff. Got to see this. It's pretty bad. Um, but the thing that, way you can help them out is that they do have, uh, silent auction and online bidding. So if you want to go to the SELF's website, which is selfhelps.org, again, it's selfhelps.org. If you can't be there at the event to support them, maybe you can go online and bid on some auctions. This, this group does one heck of a lot for our community. It, it helps out people that have struggled and, um, don't know where they're, you know, where they're to get repairs done or maybe get their car fixed or whatever. They step up and it's all through good donations, grants, and, and it's good people out here that are coming to events like this, or at least now you can bid online. You don't even have to go there. Just go, go at their website, selfhelps.org. And if you could bid on something, there's some nice items there. It helps them out and keeps this program going. So, um, great program for Hamilton. That city council supports very well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Your request would go to executive session, Mr. City Manager.
There is mayor for two reasons. Uh, to consider the employment, promotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. And to confer with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject of imminent court action.
Your motion to council go to executive session for those stated purposes given by the city manager.
I move.
Second.
Let's move to vice mayor Pullman. Second by council member fear. Uh, roll call vote on that motion, please.
Moller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
Thank you. And it is eight oh four that we're going to go on executive session. We'll come out of executive session just to adjourn the regular meeting. Thank you.